Okay, everybody, everybody's here? Okay, welcome, everybody, to the October 7th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. We are calling this meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Arthur, Commissioner Munoz, you want to lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America.
United States of America.
To the republic.
Which is standing nation. One mission, under the Constitution, indivisible, free and just. Liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Michelle, can we please have a roll call?
Oh, sorry. Peter Gower?
Here.
Okay. Mark Johnson? He's here, but he's muted. Arthur Munoz?
Sorry, I didn't unmute. Here.
Here.
Paul Alievus?
Here.
Alex Velto and John Marshall are absent. Kathleen Taylor?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Michelle. Moving on to item number four, approval of the minutes for possible action. Item 4.1, these are the Reno City Planning Commission meeting minutes from September 2nd. Do we have a motion?
Uh, Chair, Commissioner Gower, I want to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Gower.
Commissioner Johnson, a second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Gower and a second by Commissioner Johnson. I will be abstaining. Are there any other commissioners? Okay. Michelle, can you take a vote, please?
Yes. Peter Gower?
Yes.
Okay, Kathleen Taylor is abstaining. Mark Johnson?
Yes.
Arthur Munoz?
Yes.
Paul Alievus?
Yes.
Alex Velto and John Marshall are absent. Thank you. Okay, it passed. Or do... It passed.
Okay, thanks, Michelle. Okay, moving on to item 4.2, Reno City Planning Commission meeting minutes for the September 16th meeting.
Commissioner Johnson moved to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Gower, a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Does anybody have any questions, comments, need to abstain?
Commissioner Alievus, all abstain.
Thank you, Commissioner Alievus. Michelle, can you do a vote, please?
Kathleen Taylor?
Yes.
Peter Gower?
Yes.
Mark Johnson?
Yes.
Arthur Munoz?
Yes.
And Paul Alievus abstained.
Okay, motion passes. Just for fun, let's do it again with item 4.3. Reno City Planning Commission meeting minutes for the workshop of September 17th.
Commissioner Gower, I want to approve.
Thank you.
Commissioner Munoz, a second.
Great, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have anybody that needs to abstain?
Commissioner Alievus, all abstain.
Thank you, Commissioner Alievus. And Michelle, would you mind doing one more vote for us?
Kathleen Taylor?
Yes.
Peter Gower?
Yes.
Mark Johnson?
Yes.
Arthur Munoz?
Yes.
And Paul Alievus abstained. Madam Chair, we need to go back to item three for public comment. We skipped over that.
Sorry, I just saw that. Thank you very much, Michelle. So we'll go back to item number three for public comment. Michelle, do we have any general public comment?
We did receive a voicemail. However, we're not going to play it. But they voiced their concerns about the Midtown improvements. So, and that was the only one that we received.
Thank you, Michelle. I did receive that. And I, yeah, okay. Okay, so, thank you. We will close public comment on item number three. And we can move on to item number five now, public hearing. This is for possible action, case number LBC 20-00068, Truckee River Green Town Home. Michelle, do we have a presentation from the applicant, please?
Yes, just one moment. We'll bring them in. Is John Krompottic here? Oh, there he is. Hi, John.
I can see him, but I can't hear him.
Hear you.
Yeah, we got you. Yay. Oh, now we lost you. We still can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
But I'd rather not do that. This is headset I use on every single Zoom meeting, so that we don't have to deal with the echo of going through the computer audio. So let's try this one more time, okay? This is one of the weirdest things I've ever seen. Can you hear that?
Yes. Oh, now you went away. What'd you do? Where'd he go? I think we just lost John. Okay, so give us a few minutes. We'll see if we can reconnect with John.
Can you guys?
Welcome back, John.
We can see you. We can't hear you. You're muted. Okay. I think we can hear you.
And, yeah, I know. I'm just... I do Zoom meetings all day, every day, and I have trouble. This is just really disturbing. Excuse me. Let's see. Paul Suleggi is with us. Good evening, Commissioners, Madam Chair, Commissioners, John Krompottic, representing the applicant. Ian Mahaffey, our civil engineer, is on the screen. And is Chris Fawcett, the owner, developer, applicant. There he is. Okay, thank you, Paul Suleggi. Let's go to share screen and move this along. Everybody see that? Okay? Good to go? Thank you. Can you hear me okay, Kathleen? Thank you. Okay, so we're here on behalf of Truckee River Green. The reason we're here, of course, is the tentative map for 68 units, and then the SUP that's tied to it for greater than 50 units on the five-acre site, zoned MF21. I introduced the team already. All of them are prepared, as you guys would expect. There's our introduction of the site, fairly common townhome type of mapping, right? Common area with private streets. Footprint mapping on the units. Those are three-story units. All have garages. And you can see our growth density is noted as 13.2 to the acre on the MF21 site. Landscape plan, just to give you a little idea of really what I would draw your attention to here, is the separation from the river. Obviously, the property line's well set back, and then you see we have a big landscape area in there that becomes... Of course, it's a key piece to the whole thing, obviously amenity separation and a respect for one of the greatest resources we have in the area. The subject of the day, we've heard a lot from Planning Commission, we continued five weeks ago, the adjacent upstream townhome homeowners association and some of the neighbors about access. So I wanted to touch on this. And we believe we've got there with staff and everybody that's had a piece of this. At least in, you know, broad terms, there's still a few people that don't like what they're saying, but perhaps we hear from them. So the legal easement that is important for all of us to see here, forget the way we have the access configured here, because this was the original one. What is important is the private access easement that was recorded on the property that I've circled in that oval, per document number, whatever it is. That was a condition on the adjacent property map, and it was perfected upon recording the map. So it established the Eagle for future development of the site of which we're dealing with tonight. So you can see the... If you had a chance to go out to the site, you see that fence. Can you see my cursor there working along what would be the fence line? That, of course, is going to be peeled back. So all of this is open to to the now shared access. So, legal access, there's really been two issues that we've heard from, and you saw a barrage of letters and emails going back to the day before, the prior hearing, of which we continued this. And it was it was really two issues. One, about establishing the legal merits of the access. We say that it's a civil matter, and we know that it's a civil matter, and it works publicly. But obviously, we have some responsibility to get to work for everybody. So what we've done is established the legal basis, and then here is where we've evolved in the operational side of access and the practical side. That fits within the access easement that I just showed. It's obviously a different scale. They can see a much nicer configuration of access. We vetted this with our civil engineers, with the traffic engineers, and importantly, with upstream townhomes, who again is that homeowners association just to the west of us. And, you know, it works for fire access. It works for shared access. It's a typical roundabout kind of design. And again, it works within the easement. If you look at this, it was a cause of a lot of angst in our old configuration. We had the outbound traffic coming out of our zone, and then that little whoop-de-doo, reverse S curve, that created a little conflict. So we've eliminated that, and you have a typical four-legged intersection of of a roundabout. I think you'll hear from staff, but we believe that Frank and Brooke and whomever else has been involved in review has also agreed with this on its, on the technical merits. There's the access shown legally on the recorded map, if you wanted to see it in more detail. But again, it's exactly the space of which I identified on both of the prior drawings. MF21 site. There is our architecture. I mentioned three-story. These are all three- and four-bedroom units. We have four spaces per unit, you know, 20-foot depth, which is typical, and the driveway space, so that allows two-car parking there, and then garage spaces and a bit of street parking as well. Wanted to share this with the Commission, because although we are in really good shape with regard to the floodway, the floodplain, as it relates to the river, just the proximity to the river makes you kind of think. So if you look at the blue band, that is the AE flood zone, right? That's the flood zone that has a base elevation that's established with it. And so it's important to know exactly where we are to this. Next slide, a little bit technical, but I wanted to just share it with the Commission. So notice the little yellow cross-section we have through Lot 62. I'm going to show it to you in a different perspective. By the way, the orange is the Zone X. That's the 500-year floodplain. So it's, most of the site, of course, is completely removed from any flood potential, the 500-year floodplain. What we're really talking about is the AE zone, again, which establishes a base flood elevation. So if we look at that section line on the upper figure, and then look at the relationship to the one on the lower, it shows the strike through the Truckee River. You see our property line, and then you see a 68-foot setback to that building pad at 62, building pad with Lot 62. The finished floor is 47. The base flood elevation, that's the 100-year flood event elevation, that's established with the AE flood zone, is at 41. The point is, that's important for everybody to see, is that you're well above the ordinary high-water mark, which is the 100-year. And then there's the base flood elevation, and we're six feet above that. And I'm showing again just the limits of the AE, because that's the critical one. If you wanted to talk anymore about, I stayed out of project detail. I find that it's common for people to be concerned about parking. You know, the investment the developer makes here, and the homeowners. These are townhomes, of course. Price points are something that should work very well in this market. We were talking today, the owner and I, about 350 starting prices for nice two-story units above the parking platform. But a lot of parking, it's a demand in the market. It gives a lot of flexibility to the people that are buying here. And so that's why we have 279 parking stalls for the 68 units, plus, of course, the guest parking, which is on-street. So I know that's brief. I can get into details on any of the project stuff or any questions. Like I said, Mr. Suleggi's here, our civil engineer here, Ian Mahaffey. And with that, I will turn it over. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thanks, John. Do we have a presentation from staff?
Good evening, Planning Commission. This is Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner.
Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner with the City of Reno. And when Michelle gets the application up, or the presentation up, we can start on that. We have, as we're forwarded to you, we've had several comments from the HOA to the west of this project site. Staff has met with a group representing that HOA and has reviewed, as John showed, has reviewed what was presented to them and discussed with them. And when the presentation gets up, I'll go a little deeper into that. Next slide, please. So the important thing on this is that access and how that was established. That was established through the tentative map of the adjacent property in the foresight, understanding that the access to this site would be limited with strictly going two driveways next to each other, which does not meet city standards and requirements for access to the site. So that access easement was established at that time in contemplating that in the future that we would, that could be realigned, and so that they would share a common access to both of those projects. Staff's reviewed all the historic documents and the maps, and has confirmed that that is the intent of, one, that condition, and then, two, that access easement exists and is in use for that. Staff did meet with the adjacent property owners on last Friday. There were three representatives on that. We discussed the newly presented proposal. We went over the tentative map conditions and how that was established, and the city's perspective on that, or city's analysis on that. And then we also, other concerns of why the access couldn't be separated, and some other general concerns about the project separation and a number of things. So, staff has reviewed the alternative, which we would call a traffic circle versus a roundabout. Note that each one of those bars is a stop bar, so it functions more as a four-way stop in that area than a yield system, providing more safety. We do feel that it does provide overall circulation and access is greatly improved with the most recent approval. We also talked about that separation of those two sites. There is, they have submitted a fencing plan that will reduce, create that separation, and then also reduce those impacts of light glare and other things associated with the project. As we look at this further through the final map process, there would be a need for additional excitement, pavement markers, other things on that traffic circle, and that, from stop signs to some appropriate markings on that. Next slide, please. So normally, a traffic report wouldn't be required for a project of this size. Staff did have concerns with the area and Dickerson itself, and the limitations of that area. So a traffic report was provided, was requested and provided by the applicant. The city indicates that there is no anticipated significant impact to the surrounding road network. As was mentioned by the applicant's representative, Paul Suleggi, who conducted that analysis and provided that report, is present tonight and can further discuss the more detail on that if desired by the Commission. Next slide, please. So staff has reviewed what was submitted as far as the project being adjacent to the Truckee Rivers and the concerns with flooding and other issues. Staff confirmed that it meets, the proposal meets city requirements. Be aware that this is within that Truckee River watershed, and the listed agencies during the final map will additionally comment on this project, and they'll have to, the applicant will be required to work with these agencies to confirm that their concerns and comments are being addressed. With that, staff can make all the conditions as written and with the applicable findings, and recommends approval of the project. I am available for questions as needed. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Brooke. Okay, Commissioners, this is a public comment. Let's ask for...
Did I add?
Sorry, let's ask...
Hit that one?
Hello? Um, let's do disclosures. That's what I'm trying to say. Okay. Commissioner Alievus?
Commissioner Alievus, I visited the site, I spoke with the applicant's representative, and received email.
Thank you. Commissioner Gower?
Commissioner Gower, received and read email, and familiar with the site.
Commissioner Johnson?
Commissioner Johnson, I visited the site, spoke with the applicant's representative, and received and read the emails.
Thank you. Commissioner Munoz?
Same disclosures.
And Commissioner Taylor, same disclosures. Michelle, do we have any public comment on this item?
All the public comment that was received was forwarded to the Planning Commission. We did not receive any voicemails for this item.
Okay, thank you. We will close public comment then, and bring it back to the Commission for questions of either the applicant or Brooke. Someone get us started?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Gower?
Thank you. Question. I guess directed towards staff. So the information provided by the applicant, and John walked us through it regarding the AE floodway, I thought was informative. I'm just curious, Brooke, how you and the city is able to essentially make the make the, it's not really a finding, but we have a regional policy that says that no development in the AE floodway. So is the information that's presented, does it allow the city to feel like we're being consistent with that regional policy?
Yeah, working with the engineer on this and their analysis of this, although that AE and that discouragement from that, in that regional policy of that, they did feel that marking and pulling back the additional oversight of the other agencies and pulling out the floodway, knowing that the potential other mitigation or other comments or limitations may be imposed through these other agencies was sufficient to recommend and feel that it met city standards on that.
Does staff in that situation take into account adjacent development as well, and essentially a precedent that's set, or is that something that's not considered?
From what I understand, working with the engineers, I mean, there is that precedent that is set, but it is not, it is per-case basis, and we're looking at that particular project and how the impact from that particular project.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson. A question for Brooke. In looking at the information that was provided in our packet, we had the information on the intersection at Dickerson Road. We didn't have the image that was shown this evening, this traffic circle that was presented. This is really the first time that the Commission is seeing that. And in light of the fact that that was the major issue and the reason for the postponement, I guess my question is, when, you know, was that determined prior to today? And why weren't we given a chance to really review that, other than the comment saying that, you know, the issue had been resolved to the satisfaction of staff?
Understandable. So in the meeting I had with the adjacent property owners on Friday, it was, they noted that there was another another access that had been proposed to them. So staff found out about this access on Friday. Contacted the applicant, requested that. We did receive that Monday. Turned around, reviewed it yesterday to the satisfaction, and just in the time period, could not get that information over directly to this group. And felt that if we could appropriately address it...
I guess the question now is, it seems like staff has made a recommendation of approval of this project without that information. So I guess my question would be, what's the, you know, has this been fully, I guess, reviewed and vetted? And you said that it was looked at, but is what's being presented here seen as... at, but is what's being presented here seen as an improvement or a more suitable alternative to whatever was presented before that met staff's recommendation?
Correct. Through the initial, what was originally presented on, early on John's slide of that crossing of that and that access, when staff reviewed that, that did meet the access requirements in that and we would recommend with that. With this new design, and we had asked through this process of really, staff always had concerns about that access and how that was functioning and the clarity of that access. And so in review of this traffic circle coming through, staff actually saw it as a better improvement of clarity of how to cross and how to access and general circulation worked better on that, that overall process. And so we saw that as a great improvement from what we had, or not a great improvement, but a, an improvement from the original proposal, which we had moved forward to recommend approval on that initial configuration of that entrance.
Okay. And then I guess just the follow-up to that, you indicated that it was the adjacent property owner that had noted this to you. Do you have any correspondence or anything with those folks that raised all of the issues at the beginning? Have they subsequently conveyed to you their, you know, I guess, general acceptance or belief that this is a suitable solution to address the concerns that they had raised?
Yes, we do not have anything in writing. It was, we did have a video meeting with the group. They were the ones who brought up that other solution, that traffic circle had been proposed to them and that they, that was, they approved of that design over the previous design. And so there was, there were three there, three members of that HOA. Two were in, in confirmative of us reviewing that because I basically at that time said I can't move forward with your recommendation until I see it and we review what is before us. And so we have had not, we haven't had any more comment or anything from them. I said if that is a suitable solution, we'll move forward with that solution. The one other member was resistant to just the development as itself, not, and didn't have as much direct input or feeling towards the new proposal.
Okay, thank you. And I guess I'll just follow up on a similar question with John to make sure that, you know, you've had, you obviously indicated you were going to reach out at the last meeting to the adjacent property owners. Am I understanding that this solution that's presented tonight is the compromise or the preferred solution that was worked out with them?
Yes, it is. Chris Fawcett was more involved. I'd like to call upon him to answer in detail because as the developer home builder, he was intimately involved with all of those meetings. Chris, can you give him your point of view on this? You're muted. Okay.
Good evening. Chris Fawcett with Desert Wind Homes. Yes, we met with the adjacent HOA on three occasions, presented the first entry proposal that John brought up after a little bit back and forth and further discussion with them. They talked about the roundabout or what we're calling now is the traffic circle. We had our engineer redo a traffic circle, send that to them. We set up another Zoom meeting with them and we got the same feedback that Brooklyn got that, that they did, they did feel that was a better, a better entry and we felt that they, they had fully accepted that one.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. And then finally, just because he's sitting there, Paul, Mr. Soleggi, have you taken a look at the circle from, you know, with respect to the traffic counts that you had looked at through there and do you see any issues with what is being proposed?
I have looked at the roundabout or the traffic circle and there was the initial offering of the intersection configuration, an interim offer, and then this roundabout now is the, or the traffic circle is a, is a third pass on, or a third design. Of those designs, I feel that the roundabout is, has the best capacity and is a good driver acceptance of roundabout intersections. And so I've reviewed it and feel that it's a good, the best option of those that have been reviewed and support this option.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Chair, I think I've beaten that particular issue into the ground, so I will turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, other questions?
Commissioner Munoz, I have a quick question. So on staff report page 5.1G, there's an overview of the entire project. And on the, I guess it'd be the lower left-handed area that's next to the river, it'd be south, southwest portion next to the river, there's a road that stops at the property line right there. I know the property next door has a similar road or similar area that meets that. Is there going to be any emergency access from both properties down in that area? Is there any easement down in the southwest corner? I guess it'd be the best location.
Is that a question for me, Commissioner Munoz?
Yeah, sorry, John. A question for you.
We do not, we went after that. Let's see, let's go to share screen here real quickly so we're all seeing what you're pointing to. Commissioner Munoz, can you see my cursor there?
Yes, that's exactly what I'm talking about.
That's where you're talking about, yeah. We do not have legal access. We hammered on this to that. There's no punch through there. There's no legal ability to punch through as it sits today. The way we addressed this was, we vetted it with the Reno Fire Department, specifically with the fire marshal, who is Trey Palmer. The 2018 International Fire Code requires only a single point of access for a single-family attached project with less than 100 units and fire sprinklers. So the fact that we met that standard and it's been certified by the fire marshal, we didn't go after any of those other accesses.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you very much, sir.
Other questions? Okay, I'm going to ask a quick question following up on the other commissioners. Brooke, if for some reason the regulatory agencies that were listed in your presentation had concerns about building within the AE flood zone, would they put restrictions on the applicant or make those, that process known to them?
Yes, they would. And that, you know, it could result in projects like project design phase, losing units or what as it moves forward. But until, until it moves forward, that final map and their review, we won't know that.
Okay. Thank you very much. And then my next question, Mike, Michelle is joining us. I just wanted to confirm that city of Reno engineering staff looked at the traffic circle and was in agreement with the recommendation. Mike, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, good. We are in absolute conformance with the recommendation for the traffic circle.
Great. Thank you so much. Commissioners, do we have some discussion or a motion?
Madam Chair, I appreciate that you asked the question about the AE flood zone. That was a concern of mine and the response of the other regulatory agencies. So that, I'm glad you asked it and I appreciated the answer. So I'm ready to make a motion if you're ready to hear it.
Yes, please.
Okay. In the case LDC 20-00068, Truckee River Green Town Homes, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the tentative map and special use permit subject to conditions. And I can make all of the findings.
Commissioner Gower?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I will second that and I will do want to just state kind of as a follow-up that I appreciate the effort that was gone into getting the traffic circle. I don't appreciate the fact that we didn't see it until now because I will state for the record that I would not have been able to make one of the findings based on the original design. So I think this design, I appreciate the effort that the applicant has done to work with the neighbor and to vet everything. So with that statement, I will second the motion and I can make all of the findings based on what was presented this evening.
Great. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Now, do we have any other further discussion? Michelle, will you please take a vote?
Yes. Kathleen Taylor?
Yes.
Peter Gower?
Yes.
Mark Johnson?
Yes.
Arthur Munoz?
Yes.
Paulo Leves?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. You know, so thank you very much. Good luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
We can get John off the line pretty quick. Okay, let's move on to agenda, agenda item 5.2. This is case number LDC 21-00011 Legacy Village Town Homes. Do we have a presentation from the applicant, please?
Yes, we're bringing him in. Oh, there's Andy. Hi, Andy.
Good evening, commissioners. For the record, Andy Girling with Wood Rogers with me tonight. Carl Mattel, who's the fresh engineer, and Rob Winkle as well. Let me share my screen. I've got a brief presentation for you.
I'm setting the timer when you're ready.
Okay. Again, Andy Girling with Wood Rogers, representing the Legacy Village Town Home project. This project is located at the corner of Military and Lemon in the North Valleys. Proposed is a tentative map for 264 townhome, 254 unit townhome subdivision, as well as special use permit for single-family attached use with more than 100 units. Just giving you a little overview of the site in the context of the area. To the west of us is the, is existing multifamily development. As is noted in your staff report, there's also an approved senior housing project in the vicinity. And then to the north there, the, I believe it's the logistics center that is under, that has been constructed to the north. The project does consist of all three of these northern parcels and then just a portion of the southern parcel. The remainder of the southern parcel would be retained for future development. The property is master planned suburban mixed use and zone Arterio Commercial. And just to give you an overview of the specifics of the project, as I mentioned, 264 townhome units. They are proposed in a duet housing product style, so two units that share a common wall. Each of those units would then have a private patio space on the back. Those patios are, for all intents and purposes, paired up with the neighbors to the rear of them, so that you have kind of a common private space there in behind the unit. This is a house forward design. All of the units have recessed garages. They have recessed one-car garages and then a one-car driveway. Vehicle and pedestrian circulation, as you can see, is provided through the site to both Lemon on the east and Military on the west. And then we, the proposal includes a large open space buffer on the north side adjacent to the existing industrial, and that serves as our 1.31 retention, stormwater retention as well. In addition to that, around the retention pond is a walking path, so an amenity for the community. It's a one and two-story townhome with shared walls. So the one-story units are a two-bedroom, one-bath, and then the two-story units are three-bed, two-and-a-half-bath floor plans. And as I mentioned, they are a house forward design with recessed garages, so putting that front door more towards the street. We did have a couple of concerns with two of the conditions. I forwarded to the planning commission a letter detailing our concerns on this. Effectively, they boiled down to conditions six and seven. With respect to condition six, we are requesting it to be modified to allow for on-street parking to be utilized for a portion of the off-street parking demand in lieu of the previously requested ITE rates. The issue really is that we're really trying to avoid private streets, which will jeopardize the attainable housing strategy for this project. We're really working towards, the applicant is working towards presenting this, they're bringing this to market at a very attainably priced price point. And private streets kind of work against that because while you may have an affordably priced home, you end up with unaffordable HOA dues. And so we're really trying to kind of find the sweet spot of utilizing the infrastructure, utilizing the on-street parking and avoiding the private streets. This is an allowance within Reno Municipal Code, actually 18121103 subsection B, allows the planning commission to approve up to 50% of the on-street parking to be used to accommodate for the off-street parking. And what we're proposing is only using 36% of the off-street parking demand. So the total parking in the table there, 831 spaces that are totally required, that's based on a unit mix that includes 27 two-bedroom units and 237 three-bedroom units. We looked at it kind of from a worst-case perspective, worst-case scenario. In actuality, we're really anticipating there's going to be more two-bedroom units than that, and so that'll only improve this situation. But based on that kind of hypothetical mix, 831 spaces required, we are providing 528 off-street parking spaces, and there are 303 on-street parking spaces that are provided. So that's where we come up with the 36% of the off-street parking would be located on-street. So we had, we had provided to you some suggested language that we would like to propose. It reads that the on-street parking, not to exceed 50% of the required, off-street parking spaces required may be utilized to meet the project off-street parking demands. The applicant shall demonstrate that the appropriate restrictive covenants and association enforcement rights are included in the development CCNRs to address parking within the development to require that individual homes utilize the garage for parking. The saluting here is that it requires the covenant of the HOA that's disclosed to each of the homebuyers that they have to use their garage for parking. And then the on-street parking would be utilized to meet that portion of the off-street demand. And ultimately, it's going to be enforced by the homeowners association instead of the city. So you received in your packet some concerns from Alex Woodley, the code enforcement, that the city doesn't have the means to do that. This is now putting that onus on the homeowners association. There has to be a homeowners association for this development just by virtue of the housing product. And so this would put an enforcement arm into their lap. The second issue we had was with condition seven. It regulates the maximum driveway length at 25 feet, which this condition is quite frankly not common. Of all the residential projects that I've worked on in my career, really not seen this before. Understand where staff is going with it, but really feel that it results in some arbitrary design constraints that don't necessarily align with what the project, the project's design considerations or constraints, including cul-de-sacs and knuckles, Reno Municipal Code driveway grades, minimum driveway grades for the driveways, house forward design, as we had mentioned, and then Reno Municipal Code requirement for street imagery that requires varied front setbacks. So the image we have here kind of demonstrates in particular how the different models in this case could vary their front setbacks. There's usually a three-foot, code requires or asks for a three-foot variance in the front setbacks. Because it's house forward, anytime you vary that setback, you're pushing the driveway back. And so, and then in addition to that, on streets, as the grade increases, just to get the minimum 14%, or the maximum, sorry, 14% driveway grade, you've got to push the house back even further in order to accommodate for those grades. So in this scenario, you've got, you know, your minimum 20-foot driveway up to, you know, more than 28 feet in driveway depending on the street grade. And then cul-de-sacs, obviously with wedge-shaped lots, push that back even further and create, you know, kind of exacerbate the issue. So the suggested language that we provided is, prior to the approval of any final map, the applicant shall demonstrate that restrictive covenants shall be in place to restrict parking in driveways to one vehicle unless driveways are 40 feet longer and prohibit vehicles from overhanging into both street right-of-way. Again, this was an enforcement issue of concern by staff. Requiring this covenant and enforcement by the homeowners association has the same effect as the previous condition for the parking and takes the onus off of the city and puts it into the homeowners association, puts the buyers... it into the homeowners association, puts the buyers on notice when they're purchasing their home that they can't use these driveways for multiple vehicles. That concludes our presentation. We are in agreement with staff's recommendation and the other conditions, and appreciate your consideration of these modified conditions six and seven. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Andy. Do we have a presentation from staff?
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. For the record, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. Andy covered the bases of the request, which staff supports with the conditions of approval outlined in your staff report. I do have a brief presentation to cover some of these as well as to address the staff perspective on the parking issues that Andy brought up. If I could get the shared screen. I have it right here. I trust we can all see this?
Yes.
All right. So again, this is a request for a tentative map to allow for a 264 residential town home lot subdivision, and also a special use permit is required to allow for more than 100 single-family attached town home units in the AC zone. As Andy mentioned, the applicant has changed their request to switch from the ITE standards to utilizing the on-street parking, and the planning commission is able to do that as part of the special use permit. I should say that, you know, ITE, utilizing the ITE standards would only require 1.4 parking spaces per dwelling unit, so it really is kind of like-for-like. But they have requested that the on-street parking be utilized per the conditions in Reno Municipal Code if the planning commission were to approve it. Again, this site is a 31-acre site located between Lemon Drive and Military Road. There's significant buffering was included in the approval of the industrial development project to the north to buffer the future development of the site, and that includes a five-foot berm with a double row of evergreen trees, among other conditions to help mitigate that impact. That was done with the foresight that this would ultimately be developed and to mitigate the impacts of that industrial development. The nearest warehouse building is 260 feet from the project property line, with the majority of proposed lots placed an additional 125 feet back and separated by the onsite retention basin to the north. Some key conditions of approval are recommended. Condition five, the standard 1.3 to 1 retention basin. Condition 10, which ensures that the proposed sound walls located on the east, west, and south perimeters are decorative and treated with an anti-graffiti coating as they are high-profile. Condition 11 restricts hours of construction due to the adjacent residential uses, and condition 12 requiring dark-skylighting. Before I go discuss the recommended conditions related to parking, I wanted to give some background on standard code. So utilizing standard code without applying any of the available potential parking reductions, a project of this size for townhomes under 4,000 square feet with on-street parking, so that's a distinction. This is the minimum required parking, off-street parking. If there's also available public on-street parking, the standard code off-street parking rate would be one per bedroom plus one common parking space per four units. Utilizing the, you know, the tentative unit count, bedroom unit count that Andy proposed is 237 spaces, 27 spaces for the two bedrooms, you know, and then utilizing the one per four units of common parking would be a total of 831 spaces required off-street parking spaces required in addition to available on-street parking. What they're proposing, utilizing the RMC provision to allow 50% of that required, otherwise required off-street parking through the special use permit would provide 528 spaces on each individual lot. That includes the single-car garage and the driveway leading up to it, and it would also utilize available on-street parking. There's 303 spaces with the approved special use permit. Typically with a town home, we have, we have private streets. In RMC 1812-101B, in the more suburban context, requires, requires private streets for residential town home subdivisions in residential and multifamily residential zoning. This is typically what we see in a more suburban context. Alternatively, in the more high-intensity uses, like the mixed-use, the AC and CC zones, don't have minimum, minimum lot size requirements for townhomes, and that section doesn't apply. So the appropriateness of project design is ultimately up to the subject of planning commission review. As noted, staff is concerned with the viability of the proposed parking reductions and extended driveway lengths in regards to the impacts on public streets and calls for service. You have received, you know, the concerns from RPD related to potential parking issues and the email from Alex Woodley, code enforcement manager. While we appreciate the efforts of the proposed conditions with HOA approval, ultimately, if you're dealing with public right-of-way, so our concerns primarily are encroachment, encroachment into the public right-of-way, encroachment, you know, parking, parking concerns that we have parking enforcement come out, and code violations when you have double-stacked vehicles parked in extended driveways. And just as an example, you know, this is, this is Tonopah Lofts, which is a fantastic development in the heart of Midtown, you know, blocks away from transit, and they, this is an urban mixed-use project. We did allow for an alternate driveway length with the understanding that the HOA would enforce this, it's no parking, and we deferred that. It hasn't worked. This is just one example. There are many. And so deferring, deferring HOA enforcement for public issues when you maintain public right-of-way can be problematic. Not, that's not a guarantee, but that is staff's concern. So where the conditions came from, condition number six would allow that ITE rate, or, you know, if we wanted to apply the 50% off-street parking on-street, it would allow that, but it would require private streets. Condition number seven would allow for those extended driveways with private streets. Otherwise, it would restrict it to 25 feet, and that's because when you get a, you know, a driveway 32 feet, and if there is ultimately parking concerns, it's tempting for residents to double park. That's the staff concern. And again, condition number eight requires eight-by-23 parking spaces to be striped on the streets in these tighter subdivisions. That really helps alleviate the parking interface, but that would require upkeep and maintenance on, if it were a city street. So staff recommendation is to approve the conditions in the staff report. Should the planning commission accept the modifications to the conditions submitted in the memo from the applicant, staff doesn't see any technical reason why that wouldn't work. We would just add to condition six regarding the CCNRs that that be prior to first final map. So just a minor technical amendment should the planning commission choose to go that route. That concludes my presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Great, thank you, Nathan. Okay, this is a public hearing. Let's do some disclosures. Let's start with Commissioner Gower.
Chairman of Chair, spoke with the applicant's representative and am familiar with the site.
Thank you. Commissioner Levis?
Commissioner Levis, the same.
Commissioner Munoz?
I have not spoken with the representative, but I do, I am aware of the site.
Commissioner Johnson?
Commissioner Johnson, I spoke with the applicant's representative and have previously visited the site.
Thank you. Commissioner Taylor, same disclosures. Michelle, this is a public hearing. Do we have any public comment for this item?
All public comment was received and forwarded to the planning commission. We did not receive voicemail for this item.
Okay, thank you very much. We will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussions and questions. Who'd like to get us started with questions of either the applicant or staff?
Commissioner Munoz, I'll start. I have questions for, for Andy. First off, you said there was going to be a space left over for future development on the, I guess it'd be the southwest corner of the property. Can you explain exactly or what the ideas that are floating around for that would be? And you said the price point was going to try and be for lower income, for lack of a better term. What is exactly the price point that they're shooting for?
Sure. So thank you, Commissioner Munoz. For the record, Andy Girling with Wood Rogers. So first question was the remainder parcel, which would be left on the very southern tip of the kind of triangular-shaped project site there. It's about five and a half acres, and I believe the intent would be for future commercial development, kind of on that hard corner there right at Signal. But that's, you know, kind of not part of this project for this time. It could, you know, be all sorts of things, and they would have to come forward for appropriate permits in the future. With respect to, you know, what we like to say is the attainability, attainability strategy for the project, these are, like I said, two-bedroom and three-bedroom townhomes provided in a duet style, so they're not your traditional kind of, you know, you don't see four, five, six homes attached in one. They're just two homes attached in a common wall. So it still has kind of a little bit of that single-family feel. It's been kind of an in-between type housing product between your row housing and traditional single-family detached. And so the, the ability there is, you know, the density and everything else factors into the ability to make these more attainably priced. They are looking at kind of a price range starting at $275,000 and then going up, you know, the bigger units will obviously be a little more, but that is the kind of range, the starting range that they're looking at at this point.
Thank you. And then one last question. The exits onto Military, is that going to be a right-hand turn only, or are they going to be able to cross the double yellow right there?
Sure. So the northern, the northern roadway, the northern intersection, I should say, would be a right turn, in and right turn out only. The southern intersection would be a full movement, so it would have left-in, left-out. It does have recommended improvements there, striping improvements, strike and turn lanes and turn pockets and things like that that were, Mr. Suleggi's on and can talk to the traffic report that he provided, but we did incorporate all of his recommendations into the tentative map plans.
Thank you. Paul, would you mind going into that? I know Lemon Drive is going to be, it has to be right-hand only because of the aqueduct right there, but what about the Military ones?
Andy, you was correct. Yeah, for the record, this is Paul Suleggi. We prepared the traffic study. The north access is right-in, right-out only. The south access is aligned with the peak driveway across, across Military, and there is, will be the access provided out to Lemon. We had level of service challenges there at the south driveway for the exiting cars. As we started, I prepared an addendum for this that I don't believe was distributed to you, that was just given to staff, but in the addendum, as we started to look at ideas on how to mitigate the level of service E for the exiting traffic, we realized that with that connection to Lemon, if just five cars in the morning and eight cars in the evening, instead of getting the long, in the long queue to exit the south driveway on Military, they could route over to Lemon and go to the freeway that way in a, in a pretty much a free right turn. So I've coordinated that with staff and talking with Mike, Michelle, he accepts, he had accepted the concept that I proposed, that rather than getting in the long queue at the driveway, the cars would just reroute, and so the level of service problems were mitigated for the project at the driveway. Now, across the street at that same driveway, the exiting traffic out of the peak development, they were going to have level of service E also, and I didn't have a good solution for that immediately. However, RTC has a planned four-lane widening on Military in the, in the next 2022 to 2026 timeframe, and we anticipate that those issues could be addressed at that time when RTC did the upgrade. So that's how we've overcome those level of service challenges, and I've coordinated this with Mike.
Okay. And real quick, Paul, with the, the project for the 711 there on the corner, is that going to have a negative impact as well for traffic?
On that project, you know, the median was extended a short distance, so there was, there was no consequence of any competition for the median, and, and this project is separate from that, and so the level of service would still be met at our driveway with 711 traffic as well.
All right, thank you, Paul. Nothing further.
Thank you. Other commissioners, questions?
Chairman of Chair, Commissioner Johnson. I guess I have a question for Nathan. I'm trying to get a little clarification on maybe the explanation here. So I'm, I'm understanding we have, an applicant has requested a couple of modifications basically due to parking, and if I understood the request, and I'm looking at, basically at condition number six, which was the one about the parking requirements, the existing condition was allowing them to use the lower rates for the ITE requirements, but only under the condition that the streets would be private and maintained by the HOA. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. But I believe, and so they're, they're saying, no, we'd rather use a different parking rate so that we don't have to do that, but then I believe I read in your presentation, you were indicating that private streets for a development such as this are common? Did I understand that correctly?
That's correct. I, just from experience, and I did query recent town home subdivisions. As noted, code requires, without exception, private streets for town home subdivision requests in multifamily and residential zones, which is the bulk of what we typically see. The more, the more urban zones, so for mixed use, so for recent town home projects and mixed-use zones, AC and CC allows, that, that standard doesn't apply because there's no minimum, minimum lot size. And so, and so the appropriate design is really up to the discretion of review of the tentative map.
Okay, so, and not to, not to jump around in here, but we, we just had a case for some townhomes in a multifamily zone, and I know that wasn't your project, so maybe Angela, you can jump in on this one. Would those streets be required to be privatized?
I can answer that. They, they are proposed to be private.
Okay.
They would be required to be private.
Okay. So just for that, okay, so then really what's before us is the, the issue of acceptance of, or review of, I should say, the two alternate parking requirements. One that's listed in the current staff report and one that is proposed by the applicant. Is that correct?
That's correct. Those are the options.
Okay. So then, Andy, I'll just pose the question back to you. So I believe I heard in your presentation, the concern with privatizing the streets is one of maintenance costs that would be borne by the HOA under that scenario, and the fact that that would potentially impact the overall affordability of the housing, not necessarily the housing price point.
Correct, and it's a little nuanced too, because, you know, I kind of tried to make the point that, you know, yes, we are calling these townhomes, but that's by function of how we're mapping them. So we're mapping the footprint of the building, which then, you know, really makes it a town home style. If we had a standard lot and made this a zero-lot line with the, with a parcel line going down the middle, as a, you know, other duet-style, single-family attached units are, we would have, you know, the ability to have public streets. And so it just becomes a little nuanced that, yes, we're calling them townhomes because we're mapping the footprint of the building, but by all intents and purposes, right, it could be mapped differently, and we wouldn't be having this argument. We're just trying to, again, create something that's a, you know, an attainably priced product in order to, to kind of hit the market at a, you know, we've talked a lot about it, you know, in the reimagining Reno Master Plan, and really the goals and policies that are in there to strive towards a, you know, denser product. Missing middle has been, you know, tossed around quite a bit, that our community is missing that kind of, this level of development, this type of product. And so that's where we're really trying to kind of hit the sweet spot in the middle there between apartments and single-family attached, or detached, sorry. And so, so the issue- And so, so the issue then becomes, right, you have a house price, but then you also have the HOA dues that would go on top of that. We're looking at, you know, kind of a very modest HOA due because of, you know, the common landscaping around there. When you throw on private streets, all of a sudden, you really bounce that HOA due, that monthly due, into a realm where now it becomes effectively a more expensive house because your monthly payment goes up because of now your community is maintaining those streets.
Okay.
It was kind of balancing act of house price as well as HOA price.
Okay. So, I guess then the one question to follow that along, so Nathan, is there a concern from the city's standpoint about the city's ability, if those streets are public, to maintain the streets according to standard City of Reno requirements?
It's not about street maintenance, although, you know, the condition A would require striping to outline the on-street parking, but it's not about maintenance, it's about enforcement primarily. Calls for service, either for parking enforcement, typically that would go to RPD. RPD doesn't have the resources. Would go to code enforcement, you know, encroachment into the public right-of-way, parking on lawns, that sort of thing. When parking's an issue, that requires city resources, and I would defer to Alex Woodley's email included in your staff report.
Okay. And I understand that. I was just speaking of it in terms of the maintenance cost, which is what was, you know, looking at it more from what the applicant is saying. So, thank you, Madam Chair. I think that answers my questions for now. I may have a couple others as we move forward.
Other questions, commissioners? Commissioner Gower?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Follow-up question on the parking. Andy, what's the, what's the proposed length of the garage on these products?
Twenty-two or twenty-four. I believe it's, the garage, the internal garages are 24 feet, if I remember right from the foreplans. So, there's a little bit of space there. There's a door on the end, so there's some door swing, and there'd be room for some storage there.
Yeah, forty-eight feet.
Yeah, forty-eight feet of storage.
We modified that to regular garage, what we're reporting, to comply with the parking requirement.
So, I guess my concern is, my question is, if we're going to require that these units accommodate parking internally in the garage, that the length is sufficient to accommodate a range of vehicles, because, I mean, 24 feet would do it. A standard garage, more like 19 to 20 feet, wouldn't cut it for a lot of the SUVs and trucks. So, I don't want to put people in a situation where they've got a requirement, where they've got to park in their garage, and they have a vehicle that won't fit. So, 24 feet's not going to get all of them, but it'll get more than a typical garage.
Yeah. No, good, great point, and yes, you're right, right. A standard garage is probably anywhere from 18 to 20 feet, right, for your, you know, kind of very vanilla, run-of-the-mill garage. And so, this 24 feet plus is going to give either room for those larger vehicles or normal-sized vehicles, then there's additional storage there. So, it, you know, it's a nice amenity, I think, you know, it's something the market is dictating as well at this point.
Thanks for answering that question.
Commissioners, other questions? I have a couple of questions. This is probably for Andy and Paul. Paul, you said that there was maybe an addendum to the traffic study that was just prepared. I'm not sure that we did see a copy of that or any traffic study.
We prepared a full traffic study, stamped traffic study that was submitted with the applicant, the application, and then about two weeks ago, we prepared this addendum letter. I found out today that the distribution had not been wide, and, but I did personally coordinate that with Mike Michelle today, and then he did, he had got a copy.
So, Nathan Gilbert, for the record, the traffic study is extensive.
That's typically not included. There might be excerpts, but the overall study is referenced in there. I think, I think what Paul is referring to is specifically what he already outlined with that left, that southern access point on the Military Drive with the level of service E. That's what, that required the city engineer, or Mike, the engineering manager, Mike Michelle's approval. I didn't review that. I just, I coordinated with Mike. I wasn't aware that there was an additional addendum for distribution, but I can defer it to Mike.
And Commissioner, Mike is on the line here. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Get your thoughts on?
Yeah. I did issue the design exception for that initially, and I did that for a couple of reasons. Number one was that that south driveway was the only left turn available for the project onto Military. And secondly, that if the residents in that area experienced such extreme congestion, that there was adequate relief provided onto Lemon Drive to make right turn lanes onto Lemon and access the freeway that way. So, I figured that there was adequate relief. And then lastly, RTC will be coming in and doing a widening project, which will improve the level of service in the general area in the first place. So, that's why I issued that in the first place.
Do you or does Nathan know if the RTC study or the RTC project is going to happen before, after, or during construction of this project? Does anybody know the timing of that?
It will probably be a little bit after.
Okay. And then I had one more question. RTC report, excuse me, it says, so the traffic study looked overall okay. The peak hour factor value looks default. I'm not even sure what that means, or if there's a response to that.
Yeah. You know, that is really a real nuance of traffic modeling software. Honestly, RTC is getting way into the weeds of these traffic studies. They shouldn't even be commenting on something like this. It's really a traffic modeling issue, and it's really up to the design professional to recommend recommendations related to this. That particular default setting is really used for, more like schools and churches that are more related to peak hour type operations, not like a project like this. So, there is nothing, there's nothing wrong with the way that Paul modeled this. I think RTC is just getting way into the weeds on this type of stuff.
Thanks, Mike. And I don't want to put words in your mouth, but what I'm understanding or hearing is that you're okay with the traffic recommendations with this project.
I am absolutely, I'm absolutely okay.
Thank you so much. Other questions, commissioners? I don't see any hands going up, but I guess I'm going to just?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Johnson, I've got a couple of discussion items, I guess. You know, I think it's the two, the two items that the applicant brought up with respect to parking in the driveways. To me, there's some interesting things happening with parking in terms of both what we're requesting and what's out there, and I do, you know, this is one of those where there's a pretty substantial difference between what City of Reno code requires and what, you know, the actual, I guess, traffic engineer requires. And, you know, we've had this discussion with respect to the Reno, you know, the code update that we're looking at and a number of different things. And so, I think there's some middle ground that we seem to be striving for, and I think this is an interesting opportunity for us to really see that. One of the things that was tying it together in my mind was just trying to understand how we have a requirement, you know, for one parking, or one off-street parking spot per bedroom, even when there's on-street parking. And I'm trying to wrap my head around the reconciliation of that with also the, you know, number of anticipated students that are going to be generated from this, which according to that, is going to have a substantial number of these bedrooms tied up with individuals who are too young to drive. So, there's some sort of interesting things there. So, in my mind, I think what the applicant is suggesting, especially with the demonstration of the number of on-street parking spaces not even reaching the level that code allows for this, seems to me to be, you know, something that seems reasonable and seems like we can review it. And I appreciate where the city's coming from, but again, I think there's a difference between what's being allowed in the residential areas and what's in more of a, you know, an arterial commercial zone. So, I think I'm leaning towards looking at what the applicant's proposing for that and seeing that, to me, it makes sense. The other issue, and I didn't have any questions on it, because I think the discussion from both the applicant and Nathan was pretty clear in terms of the length of the driveways. I do have some concerns from a design standpoint of limiting the length of the driveway to both a, you know, a maximum on one hand, and then a, you know, basically a doubling of that with an area in the middle that quite frankly would be a space that could be required for this type of, you know, house-forward design or, you know, alternating setbacks and the requirements for that. I think there's, there's some questions that I have, and I think Andy's presentation demonstrated some of the issues with setting a minimum, or excuse me, setting a maximum. And I appreciate the image that Nathan showed with the issues in Midtown. I think the issue with that one though is that the driveways themselves aren't a full 20 feet long. And I remember a subsequent project that was also in Midtown where we actually put a requirement for signage saying that parking was not allowed in the driveway, and I think it was a direct result of that situation. So, I just, I hesitate to put that on as a requirement. I understand the rationale behind it and the concerns from a code enforcement standpoint, but I just seem like we're basically conditioning out quite a bit of flexibility for an issue that, while I believe it exists, I'm just not sure it's as prevalent as something that we would need to be throwing the condition on there for. So, from my standpoint in discussion, I'm in favor of the project, and I'm leaning towards being more in favor of the recommended conditions from the applicant based on the discussion and what I've seen here this evening. So, thank you for letting me have that time for discussion, Madam Chair.
Great. I guess I'll just throw my discussion out. Commissioner Olivas, Olivas, did you have a question or a comment?
Okay. So, thank you, Commissioner Johnson, for your thoughts on that. My perspective just comes from resources of the city, and I would rather see private streets because then it seems like most of the conditions and the revised conditions sort of go away. If we're going to ask the HOA to take care of parking enforcement, I just, I think the city's going to get calls on it, and if they're private streets, that would be my recommendation. I don't, I know we're trying to find the missing, fill in the missing middle and come to an affordable housing, but I just feel like maybe the city might be getting left with some of the financial burden or that, those resources where we really don't have them. We just saw, right before this project, we had town homes and all the streets were private, and that, I know it's a different part of town, but we weren't even having this discussion, discussion with on-street parking. So, those are, those are my thoughts. I'm supportive of the project. I just would like to see private streets.
Commissioner Munoz, Madam Chair, I'm agreeing with you. It just seems like we're asking the city to take on something, and I don't see the benefit there. I don't see we're getting the benefit out of that as the city. So, I'm just, I'm in agreement with you.
Commissioner Gower, Commissioner Olivas, comment?
Madam Chair, I'll try, and I, you know, I certainly see both sides, and I understand the conundrum. You know, I think I'm probably leaning a little bit towards the logic that the applicant and Commissioner Johnson articulated, and it comes a little bit from personal experience, having lived in a community with private streets and having borne the cost of the HOA dues, so I know what that can do to, you know, sort of lifestyle affordability. So, I'm kind of coming from a little bit of a real-world example. I understand the burden it places on the city, and, you know, if we're comfortable conditioning it that way, and we feel like the HOA has the ability to, you know, enforce those conditions, that's really what it comes down to.
Commissioner Olivas, I agree with Commissioner Johnson's comments. I guess I might add into that a little bit too, following Commissioner Gower, that I guess the maintenance of the streets is going to happen, it's just who's going to have to pay for it. The city hasn't really put forth an argument of the cost of paying for the maintenance, rather their arguments were in enforcement. So, I didn't really hear anything that, as far as the counts and what the count should be, but rather it was an enforcement argument. So, based on that, if it's an alternative mechanism for enforcement works, and if the HOA can handle it, and I know HOAs can have some teeth with fines and stuff too, and a lot of people complain about them for some of the things they do, but if that's an appropriate mechanism, I think that I would lean towards the applicant's stance on this.
Nate, would you agree with Commissioner Olivas on that statement?
You know, encroachment in the, in the city right-ofways, right-of-way issues, those are a city issue. I don't know how much authority an HOA would have to that end, but I, you know, this is certainly up to the planning commission's purview. You've heard, you've heard two sides to it.
Madam Chair, can I ask the follow-up question of the applicant? Andy, can you respond to a scenario where a vehicle is encroaching into the right-of-way, it's not being parked in the driveway per the condition? What does the HOA do? What happens?
So, in that scenario, it would be partially on private property, partially in the right-of-way, so it would be an HOA enforcement issue. So, I think what we're really trying to do is kind of find the middle ground here, that, you know, the city's concern is enforcement, so we're willing to put in mechanisms to both notify these residents, right? Because this is not like a apartment complex or something like that where you have renters coming in and out, right? This is, these are home buyers, so they have to sign disclosures in their closing documents that they agree to that. And we can even, you know, we're saying we would put restrictive covenants in there. There could be even a, you know, a separate restrictive covenant that's specific to each of these issues that really, you know, shines a light on it to these buyers if they're coming in, that they would have to sign off, that they are in agreement in buying in this community, that they have to park in the driveway and park in the garage, right? And that those restrictions are going to be enforced by the homeowner's association. So, you know, there's intuitive, you know, issues that the? So there's intuitive issues that the HOA can then have as far as fines and things like that. So really, I think it makes it even maybe more streamlined. We totally are empathetic to the city and code enforcement, right? They're significantly understaffed, and so this puts it on to a private property manager who is going to have to commit to the staffing. They're being paid to do it. And so then they would be the ones that would be maintaining the restrictions on the community.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I guess one other point that I would make in terms of the way that I'm looking at this, and again, completely understand the code enforcement standpoint, I guess I'm also looking at this in terms of the overall development that we have here. This is essentially as proposed. It's 240-some units, essentially landlocked within its own development. This isn't an infill project where we're impacting existing streets, where in the situation like Nathan provided is the photo, there are vehicles that are blocking a sidewalk that existed prior to the development of those houses. And so having a car parked across that has a greater impact because that has every possibility of people from outside of that particular development using those streets and going from one to another. And I'm not saying that people won't be walking on these sidewalks, but the impact that would typically bring about a phone call to code enforcement about a sidewalk being blocked, just the way I'm looking at it, seems to be a little less possible or prevalent here as it would be someplace where we're looking at an infill development. And that's not to say it doesn't happen. I don't have anything in front of me other than the letter from Alex Woodley indicating his concerns. But again, from a discussion standpoint and the way I'm looking at it, I'm just, I'm not seeing evidence that this is going to be a large code enforcement impact. And that was also why I was asking the point that Commissioner Olivas made in terms of street maintenance. I mean, that, to me, would be a bigger issue that the city would be taking on. Street maintenance, snow plowing, gutter cleanup, any of those types of things that the city would have for public streets, doesn't seem like that's an issue. And that, to me, seems to be a bigger concern from a planning standpoint than how often the code enforcement is called. And I do think the comment about the depth of the driveways has some impact on that as well. I mean, 25 feet is great, but I think as Andy was saying, they're not really looking to go with the kind of driveway that's 35 feet everywhere where you have that potential. I think they're asking for that because they want a little bit of design flexibility. So again, I appreciate the discussion, I appreciate the concern, but I'm just, I'm not seeing that we would have the same situation for code enforcement requests in this location that we would have in a more central infill-type area.
So having said that, I'm looking at it from an entire perspective of not just code enforcement. And I'd like to ask Nate, why did we get something from code enforcement this time? This isn't usually something that we see. But Commissioner Johnson, to your point, we are, the city is going to have to maintain those streets in addition to code enforcement, so that's not the only thing that I'm looking at. It's one concern that was brought up in the staff report.
Nathan Gilbert. So yeah, working with code enforcement for 14 years, I've heard the complaints, I've heard the concerns numerous times, and this just, I did route this to code enforcement. We routed it to most agencies, and Alex responded accordingly.
Okay. So I guess, again, back to what I was saying is, I'm not just looking at it from a code enforcement perspective on the street, on the private streets. I'm looking at it from maintenance, and I just, I don't want to put extra burden on the city of Reno right now. I know it's an HOA, I know that it's an individual assessment, but I think asking the city to take on things like this right now is just not financially smart.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I'm just going to point out that the only point, the requirement that's in here for private streets is not a requirement that the streets be private. The item six, and I can be corrected if I'm wrong on this, but the only mention of requiring these streets to be private, because in the zone that they're in, our code does not require private streets. The only item on here that requires private streets is if the applicant uses the ITE parking requirements. The applicant has stated that they do not wish to use the ITE parking requirements, that they wish to use the exception in the code to utilize on-street parking up to a certain amount to not have the requirement for public streets. So to me, the question before us, and again, I throw this out there for somebody to correct me if I'm wrong, the question is, are we willing to accept, as presented, the code exception that's already existing? And if we do, these streets do not have to be private per any requirement that's currently in here. So if we want the streets to be private, it's not based on a code requirement as the applicant has presented, and if we change what they're saying, the streets do not have to be private per our code as long as we accept the parking exception that was presented to us.
That's an accurate statement.
Thank you.
But I think we could put the condition that we would want, private streets.
And that's what I'm saying. I just want that to be decoupled from the question.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, too.
So I guess we've had some lively discussion. Does somebody want to, do we want to keep going, or somebody want to make a motion?
Commissioner Olivas, I'd add to follow on your comment. I guess kind of, the city's finances, like all governments are going to be in tough times here coming up, especially in the near future. But I think that the property owners have expectations and rights, and they generate taxes to pay for that stuff, too. So I think that that isn't necessarily an argument that I buy into, that we should make all the streets private, because we get all kinds of subdivisions that don't have private streets. They have other reasons why they may want private streets, or they don't want to do the curb and gutter or whatever, and sidewalks, then those are other choices that they make. But I think that as long as it's conforming, otherwise, I wouldn't think that the city should use the financial out as a way to kind of force private streets. I think other triggers would be more appropriate, whatever they may be.
Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
As soon as I bring it back up here, sorry, apologies. In case number LDC 21-00011, Legacy Village Townhomes, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the tentative map and special use permits subject to the conditions with the modifications to the conditions six and seven as presented by the applicant in the presentation tonight. And based on that, I can make all of the findings.
Commissioner Olivas. Madam Chair, if I may, I just wanted to, I brought up earlier, if we were to, if the commission goes this route, could we add to condition number six on the second paragraph that prior to approval of final map is a preface to that sentence? Thank you.
Madam Chair, I take no exception to what Nathan's proposed as in addition to that exception, to add that into the modified condition.
Okay.
Commissioner Olivas, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Michelle, will you take roll call, please?
Yes. Kathleen Taylor.
And I am having problems with condition E and D.
Oh, sorry. Peter Gower?
Yes.
Mark Johnson?
Yes.
Arthur Munoz?
No.
And Paul Olivas?
Yes.
Did we call Paul twice?
No.
No? Okay.
I seconded the motion and then I voted.
Okay. Sorry. So do, go ahead, Angela.
I was going to say, that is a three-two vote, and a tentative map requires four in favor. So the motion does not pass. The motion fails.
Okay. I'm trying to look through this. Okay. Do we have to say anything else?
Carl, are you on the line?
Yes. Yeah, so the special use permit only requires three votes. So the tentative map is denied, but the special use permit, since it was part of the motion, would pass. So that's where we are. So does somebody want to make another motion or table the item?
That's a good question.
Carl, would it be appropriate to break out the tentative map from the special use permit with respect to the motion? Or since the...
I would recommend that. I think it's a good idea, yes.
So I guess then, I'm a little confused, and I'm trying to look through here relatively quickly. So maybe it's a question for Nathan. So Nathan, basically, the conditions that have been applied there are applicable to both the tentative map and the special use permit. It's just that the findings are separate between the two. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So Madam Chair, if you would like, I will restate my motion and break it out into the two different requirements.
Okay, so we'll have one motion for a special use permit and one motion for the tentative map.
Correct. And is there, I guess, Carl, is there a difference in terms of the order that they're taking in with respect to one being required before the other?
No, I don't think there's any reason to put one in front of the other.
Okay. So I guess what I'll do is, I'll start with the special use permit, which is basically to develop the townhomes, and then I will follow it up with the second one, which would be the tentative map for those townhomes. So in the case of LDC 21-00011, Legacy Village Townhomes, tentative, excuse me, special use permit request for the number of townhomes, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to the conditions, including the modified condition six and seven as presented by the applicant, and the change to the modified condition number six, I believe it was six, as recommended by staff.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Olivas, I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, Michelle, will you please take a vote?
Yes. Kathleen Taylor?
No.
Peter Gower?
And those would be D and E with conditions that I can't make. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Peter Gower?
Yes.
Mark Johnson?
Yes.
Arthur Munoz?
No.
Paul Olivas?
Yes.
Okay, so for the special use permit, it looks like we have a vote of three to two, so that motion would carry.
Okay, Madam Chair, to follow that up, in case number LDC 21-00011, Legacy Village Townhomes, the request for a tentative map to develop the 264-unit townhome residential subdivision, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the tentative map, again, subject to the conditions, including the modifications to condition six and seven as presented by the applicant, and the modification to the applicant's condition number six as recommended by staff. And based on that, I can make all the tentative map findings.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Commissioner Olivas, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Michelle?
Kathleen Taylor?
No, and I can't make F and G.
Okay. Peter Gower?
Yes.
Mark Johnson?
Yes.
Arthur Munoz?
No.
Paul Olivas?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. We have a vote of three to two, and with the tentative map, as Angela stated, I think we need four, so that would be a technical denial, if that's accurate. Okay. Okay, we will move on. Sorry?
Wait, could you read the appeal process, please?
Yes. Very small. "Any final action not including recommendations or failure to take action by the planning commission may be appealed to the city, the Reno City Council, by the applicant, the mayor, or a city council member, or any person who is aggrieved by the action or inaction. An appeal, together with fees, must be filed with the city clerk within 10 calendar days, starting on the day after written notice of the action is filed with the city clerk, and if the 10th calendar day falls on a weekend or holiday, when the clerk's office is not open, the appeal may be filed on the next business day." Is that okay? If we move on now, Michelle?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Next, we have agenda item 5.3. This is for possible action, case number LDC 21-00008, Daybreak PUD Planning Area 23. Michelle, do we have a presentation from the applicant, please?
Yes, I believe Andy's still on the line. Andy, are you ready to...
All right, we're just switching over to the room here. Maybe give me just a couple minutes.
Do you guys just want to take like a five-minute quick break?
Sure.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute quick break, and I think that'll put us back at 8:01.
Thank you.
Is that okay with you, Michelle?
Yes, that works for me. Thank you.
Okay, everyone, I have 8:01. Are we ready to get back to the meeting? Michelle, let us know when you're ready. Angela, Michelle, are you guys there? Ladies there, actually?
We're here.
Okay.
Want to resume?
Great. Let's resume. Andy, I believe we are ready for your presentation.
All right, great. Let me share my screen. Well, Madam Chair, Commissioners, uh, for the record, Andy Derling with Wood Rogers representing the Daybreak Project. Um, before we get started, we have three items here. There were three separate tentative maps that were submitted. Um, I did craft my presentation to cover kind of all of them at once. Um, but with that in mind, we also submitted, uh, earlier today, a request to continue, um, the tentative map for Villages 24 and 25 and 26. Um, you also received a letter from Garrett Gordon, um, representing Sunny Hills with concerns about some shared infrastructure in terms, uh, of cost sharing between Sunny Hills and, uh, Daybreak. Uh, we obviously, uh, the applicant does not necessarily agree with everything in there. Um, but, uh, the, uh, Sunny Hills Development recently acquired, uh, last month, the, um, Belvista Ranch Days Two development, uh, of which there is a number of shared infrastructure aspects between those, uh, the Daybreak and Belvista Ranch Days Two developments, uh, really tied to 20, uh, Villages 24, 25, and 26. And so, as I go through our presentation, I'll skip over those, but we do respect the request, um, that you continue those, uh, and give us the opportunity to continue work with, uh, the adjacent property area. So with that, um, Daybreak, uh, is a mastermind community located in southeast Reno. Um, I know, um, several of you were on the commission, uh, when this was, when you approved it. Uh, that was back in 2018, uh, so it's been quite a while, and then I know a, a number of you are new. Uh, and so I, I wanted to give a little bit of overview just of the, the entire project, then we'll hone in on, on this first phase of development. So the Daybreak, uh, plenty of development is approved at 3,995 dwelling units, has 46 acres of commercial land use, and 36% of the site is provided as open space, which consists of passive open space, uh, parks, and then, uh, wetlands and flood storage areas. Uh, we will be, uh, reestablishing Thomas Creek. You can see my pointer here on the kind of southwest portion of the site. Uh, the old Alexander Lake is where, um, this Village 10 is. It was all, an old, uh, irrigation facility with stock water pond for the ranching activities. That's being decommissioned, and in lieu of that, would be a more natural stream environment, which is a, a much better ecologically, uh, sensitive, uh, aspect of the project than, than the old, uh, Alexander Lake that's out there. Um, this is in the critical flood pool for, uh, or portions of the site, I should say, are in the critical flood pool for the city of Reno, and where Reno Municipal Code requires a one-to-one mitigation, this project conditioned itself to provide 25% more flood pool storage. Uh, it is a multi-modal community design. We have, uh, multi-use paths and bike lanes, uh, on the backbone roads, uh, and those connections then provide connection to the existing, uh, bike path that's on Better and Sparkway. Uh, our connections to Better and Sparkway are both at the south side here, uh, which would be a signalized intersection, and on the north side up here, a signalized intersection as well. So before you tonight is our tentative maps associated with what we're referring to as Phase One, or the first phase, uh, of development here, which includes Villages 23, 24, 25, and 26 in that phase, um, which are highlighted in the red here. On the right side, this is the existing conditions map that's in the PUD. Um, and so this, uh, right side, or the east side, I'm sorry, over here, is, there is a forward aggregate pit. If you've, uh, driven by the site, it, it really is, uh, a significantly disturbed site, uh, and we would be recreating that as part of these tentative maps. Uh, we did break this into three tentative maps. Village 23, which we do want you to hear tonight, includes 160 lots, located on the far, far north side of the property. Um, Villages 24 and 25 would include 163 lots potentially, and Village 26, 135 lots. So in this space, 450 lots total, uh, wherein the PUD was estimated to be approximately 590 lots. So due to a lot of the grading constraints, a mix of the housing product types, uh, we ended up with, uh, quite a few, quite a bit fewer lots on this side, uh, which has positive impacts on, on things like traffic. Uh, this would include the extension of South Meadows Parkway to Rio Wrangler, and for Village 23, the construction of Rio Wrangler up to the north. There is an existing, uh, right-of-way here. There was an offer of irrevocable dedication for the extension of South Meadows Parkway from its terminus, uh, uh, right now on the, on the east side of the Belavista subdivision, uh, across, uh, across Seamo Creek. And so that irrevocable, um, offer of dedication was accepted by the city, and then we would need to design those, um, um, that bridge within that, uh, right-of-way. So for Village 23, uh, the subdivision before you tonight, uh, if you grant the continuances, uh, and this first item that's in front of you is 160 lots. Uh, it consists, uh, it also includes 20.3 acres of common area, and the Village 23 actually has a combination of, of more passive open space, hillside, or revegetated hillside areas, uh, due to the grading, some formal landscaping along the streets, and, yeah, project entries, and then this in particular actually has one of the, um, three to four parks that are associated, or that are going to be provided within the overall Daybreak community. Uh, this is a linear park. It would have, um, we're, we're thinking, you know, some, some nodal features, whether it's some small play areas, some, you know, kind of park benches and things like that, or even some, uh, a park or course, you know, some exercise stations that would be along there in conjunction with a multi-use path along Rio Wrangler. Um, the minimum lot size in Village 23 is 5,600 square feet. Uh, so nominally, the, the average kind of, or the typical kind of lot dimension is 55 by 100, uh, and then they, they get a little bit bigger from there, uh, due to the grading. The maximum lot size that's proposed in here is just, uh, just under 12,000 square feet, and the average lot size is, uh, just under 6,900 square feet. That concludes my presentation on Village 23, as we mentioned. Villages 24 and 25, we won't, um, cover tonight. We had, do ask that you continue these items, um, to a date uncertain. Um, but I did want to, um, cover one aspect that I know you received, uh, several emails on, and that is the horse mitigation that's part of, um, the proposed, uh, development. This exhibit comes straight out of the PUD, and the requirement in the PUD is that, um, the eastern boundary would be completely fenced prior to any, um, uh, construction activities. Um, those, that would also consist of, uh, some cattle guards at the street crossings, so at the north side here, uh, and at the south side here, and then for any other, uh, roadways, there's an existing, uh, roadway that goes up into the hills over here that would need to have a cattle guard on it as well. Um, those, um, would then, you would have this contiguous line of fencing, and the cattle guards would take the horses out of here. The horses would be cleared out of this area prior to any construction activities. Uh, the applicant has already, um, started the procurement process of those cattle guards. There was about a two-month lead time on getting them, and so they're waiting on those to come in, and then they'll start installation of the fencing as soon as possible. Um, the fencing then would be the responsibility of either the applicant or developer, um, during construction, or turned over to the homeowners association once the homes are in, uh, for, um, uh, maintenance of that fence line in perpetuity. With that, that concludes our presentation, and would be happy to answer any of your questions.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Brooke, do you have a presentation for us?
Good evening, Planning Commission. Brooke Oswald, City of Reno, Associate Planner. I do have a, a small presentation, um, similar to Andy's request. It, Doug, this was, uh, submitted prior to their request for continuance, so I will stick to the item 23 on this. Um, if you can start the presentation, please, Michelle? So once again, there, uh, there's three related cases. We're currently looking at LDC, um, 21-0008, Daybreak PUD. On the first slide, uh, go to the next slide. This is really related to some conditions on 24 and 25. Next slide, please, Michelle. So when we looked at the Daybreak PUD, we, uh, the proposed development was reviewed per the standards of the PUD handbook that the, uh, applicant's representative outlined, uh, the approval of that handbook. That handbook is pretty specific on details on how, um, sites to be graded, uh, application for SUPs, uh, requirements of parks and open space and, and access. So utilities are in close proximity to the site. They would be extended over the South Meadows area, uh, and through that area. As, uh, Mr. Derling outlined, uh, there is a small parcel there that is, uh, under the ownership of the adjacent property owner. Uh, that does have the irrevocable, uh, dedication on that, and the city, uh, has, has reviewed that and, uh, is comfortable with it, the, allowing that continuous to the, um, Daybreak section of the project, and then the continuation of Rio Wrangler. Uh, Mike, Michelle, our engineering manager, is, uh, on the call and can add, if you have specific questions related to the access or that, those agreements, um, please direct those towards him. So it should be noted, uh, each of these areas are designed and conditioned to stand alone. So 23 can happen without the other developments, twenty, and, and so forth and so on. So each, uh, proposed area can stand alone. Additionally, as was outlined in the handbook, we have, uh, some several agreements. Those, um, are supporting, uh, those, and are related to that handbook and the approval of that handbook. Uh, there will be an affordable housing agreement, uh, there's a youth recreation agreement, and an emergency services agreement. We also have two other agreements, um, that don't, don't come into play at this time, but there is a flood mitigation for off-site improvements that would come to the city, uh, which this, uh, this particular, uh, tentative map does not trigger. And then the additional is for a site selection for schools. Um, the, the tentative maps were presented to the, uh, Watchout County School District, and it was not, uh, designated or alerted to at this time that they would desire a school in this area. Next slide, please. So we have received several, uh, comments. Those have been forwarded to the Planning Commission. The majority of those comments have been related to that feral horse population along the Virginia Range there, um, as was stated by the applicant's representative. Within the, uh, handbook, uh, it clearly addresses the requirements of the construction of that fencing, the timing of that fencing, the type of fencing. Uh, that fencing does have to meet state standards of NRS. Uh, there's very strict, uh, or not as strict, but there is a, a, uh, standards and requirements that, of that fencing and the type of fencing that it will have to meet. And then defines those responsibilities, and then the ongoing and long-term maintenance of that. So with that, that does address, uh, many of those concerns that we were seeing coming in through, um, those comments. Additionally, this afternoon, we did receive a letter from the legal counsel of the adjacent property owner, and, um, staff has, uh, has, has reviewed that, but has not fully analyzed that, and at this point, um, would not feel comfortable moving forward to comment on it until we had more time to analyze it and compare it to, uh, existing documents and other things. So with that, staff can make all the applicable findings, and with the conditions, uh, recommends, uh, recommends approval of the project. Thank you. I'm available for questions as necessary.
Great, thank you, Brooke. This is a public hearing, so we will ask Commissioners for disclosures. I will, um, start with Commissioner Johnson.
Commissioner Johnson, I'm familiar with the PUD, and I spoke with the applicant's representative.
Thank you. Commissioner Munoz?
Commissioner Munoz, sorry, I'm trying to find my mute button there. Um, I am familiar with the site, and I did email correspond with the applicant's, uh, representative.
Commissioner Gower?
Good evening, Madam Chair. I spoke with applicant's representative, have previously visited the site, and received and read emails.
And Commissioner Levas?
Commissioner Levas, I visited the site, uh, received and read emails, and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Thank you. Commissioner Taylor, as did I. Um, Michelle, do we have any public comment on this item?
All public comment received was forwarded to the Pikachu... Oh, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. All public comment was forwarded to the Planning Commission. No voicemail was received for this item.
Thank you very much. We will close public comment and bring it back to the Commission, Commissioners for questions, of either the applicant or Brooke. Discussion?
Madam Chair, a quick question for the applicant.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Gower, please.
Thank you. Andy, just a question in terms of the phasing. So, you know, we're looking at this 23 piece. Can you talk to me, or kind of talk me through the, um, timing of the subsequent phases of the PUD, particularly the, some of the commercial development that might capture some of the trips that would otherwise go down South Meadows to the commercial, um, uses further down the road there?
Sure, let me, uh, share my screen, going back to the land use side. It's going to be easier to show. This was identified, the east side over here was identified as Phase One. It, it is the least constrained. It's already disturbed land. Um, you know, there's, there's water infrastructure in the ground over there. Sewer is stubbed at the terminus of South Meadows, and, you know, really importantly, it's completely out of, um, you know, this, this, almost this entire... this entire area is outside of the floodplain and flood pool area. So it is the, you know, low-hanging fruit, if you will, for the initial phase of development. The phasing plan is that the next step, and I think anticipating, you know, probably toward the end of this year, next year, looking at tentative maps and what we referred to previously as the town center. So that would be probably, in the handbook, it's called out as Phase 2A, which is kind of on the west side over here, units 17, 18, and 19. And then Phase 2B would be the remainder of it. Phase 2B has, is in the floodplain, and it would have to have the colmar in place per the conditions of the, or at least submitted as per the conditions of the PUD. But these, that town center would be the next major phase of development that the planning commission should expect to see in the near future.
Thank you, Andy. And Madam Chair, if I could follow up with a question for Brooke. You know, as we look at these, I understand the sequencing and the ability to have these products come online sooner with the availability of the infrastructure and existing disturbance. But how are we looking at traffic, you know, particularly as, you know, this sort of northeast end of South Meadows Parkway gets built out with some of the other strictly residential products out there? I mean, are, do we have a good handle on the traffic situation all funneling down South Meadows to, towards the freeway there?
Yeah, I can answer just a bit of that. So RTC did recently finish their study. They actually are finding their traffic levels are lower than was predicted previously. So there is that advantage going there. We are anticipating with these future phases that we would see creating more walkability, creating those shorter trips and those mileages. We are also seeing this, the ability, at least with veterans and other ways, for carpooling or other sort of methods to happen out of these, out of these areas to work in that. I would turn it over to Michael, Michelle, Mike, Michelle, who could probably detail a little bit more of the original traffic submittal that came through with the Daybreak PUD and then, and how that's comparing with what we're seeing on these particular projects. Mike, if you could maybe chime in and address the traffic studies and what we're seeing on those traffic counts, that would help Commissioner Gower.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
So Commissioner Gower asked a question related to traffic and the impacts that we're seeing when we're seeing largely strictly residential coming in out there. What, and I referred back to the new RTC study and seeing lower traffic counts out through that area, those lower impacts. And then if you could maybe compare what we saw with the traffic study coming in through the tentative maps versus our overall sort of traffic study and how that compared with the Daybreak PUD.
Yeah, I think in general, Commissioner Gower, the traffic counts we see today, based on the new RTC studies, are much lower than what were contemplated in the original PUD documents, which hasn't necessitated a, like, Rio Wrangler being reclassified from a four-lane to a two-lane roadway. So I think in general, we're seeing less traffic impact based on the newer studies.
Mike, is that because of the southeast connector? I mean, what's the?
It is, it is.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Brooke.
Commissioners, other questions?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, quick question for Brooke. The, and I guess this is tied up into the whole way that we're going about this, but the packet that we had has the landscape plans for this, for number 23, but the grading plans that are included under this item are for Phases 24 and 25. So I don't really have a grading plan to look at, but there's a condition in here, and it appears from the, at least the map, about the riprap. Are we seeing some grading along the east side on number 23 in the same way that we are for 24 and 25 against that east side? Is that where we're looking at this riprap question?
Yeah, that is correct. So along that east side of all three of these tentative maps, we're seeing some steeper slopes as they come into that hillside to keep the overall grading down. We're seeing towards the east end of the developments. So that would be an additional riprap through that area. We have proposed that condition to lessen the overall impact of the riprap, you know, matching the surrounding colors and coming back and revegetating those steeper slopes at the back of the hill. The steeper slopes do reduce the overall grading and impact through that property and allow that, the proposal for that development and street and access to work through that.
Okay. And then I guess I'm going to follow up with Andy on the similar question. Just looking at that grading, I mean, those are some, some pretty, you know, extensive grading issues there that I'm seeing, and kind of a two-part question. Was that, one, was that anticipated as part of the overall PUD and spoken to? And then, two, is that, are we, are we basically doing that because, as you mentioned, it's a previously disturbed area?
Yes. So to get to all your questions. First, we did contemplate the grading as part of the PUD. We actually included kind of a mass grading model as part of the PUD, and that was to demonstrate how cuts and fills would be accommodated for and not having to go through, you know, future special use permits. We were demonstrating, you know, how that would happen. In this area in particular, because it is, or was a former aggregate pit, there are slopes and holes and all sorts of features that were created during the mining of this site that really have created what you, you know, uncharacteristic or unnatural slopes that we're having to deal with. And so especially, you know, on the eastern boundary there, there's some very steep cut slopes in there. So we would actually be, you know, decreasing the slope of those in order to bring it more into compliance with code. So that would be just a, yeah, there's a, it's difficult to see from the roadway that the dirt roads is out there because it's a large burn, but it is a very, very disturbed site, and the amount of fill and other kind of workings that are going to go on are going to fix a lot of that.
Okay. So then I guess, and I think you've kind of answered the question, but just in general, the slope that once it goes in and gets the riprap and the revegetation and everything else, that all falls in under essentially what the HOA would be responsible for. It's common area landscaping. It's not part of anybody's parcel or anything along those lines. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. The steeper slopes, those, as, you know, Brooke conditioned in the staff report for soil into those riprap slopes and revegetation on them, yes, those are all in common areas, not necessarily in the back of lots.
Okay. And then is the, is the horse fencing at the top or the toe of the slope?
It would be at the top because it's going to be installed prior to any of the grading activities. So it is at the extent of the grading along that eastern boundary.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. No further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioners, other questions? Discussion?
Madam Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Gower.
Get to the right place here. Okay, in case of LDC 21-0008 Daybreak PUD, planning area 23, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the tentative map subject to the conditions. I can make all the findings, and I just want to say that I appreciate that the school site that was previously part of this portion of development is being relocated to a more central part of the community. That was an issue for me with the PUD. So very pleased to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gower.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I will second the motion, and I can also make the findings for the tentative map.
Thank you. Michelle, can you please call, roll?
Kathleen Taylor.
Yes.
Peter Gower.
Yes.
Mark Johnson.
Yes.
Arthur Munoz.
Yes.
Paul Olivas.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Good luck with your project. Don't move, Andy. Okay, so, moving on to item 5.4 and 5.5, I think we should probably, we'll probably need two separate motions.
Yes, please.
So we will move on to item 5.4, possible action for case number LDC 21-0009 Daybreak PUD, planning area 24 and 25. Andy, do you want to give us a presentation, or do you want to move forward with your request for a continuance?
No, I guess I would just reserve any time if the commission decides not to grant a continuance. We would obviously love to give a presentation on the specifics of this, but do request that you grant the continuance so we can work with the adjacent property owner.
Thank you. Brooke, did you want to make a presentation?
I would defer until a motion was made on that, that continuance on that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Michelle, do we have public comment on this item?
We received public comment for this item. It was forwarded to the Planning Commission. We did not receive voicemail for this item.
Okay, great. We will close public comment for this item. Commissioners, I guess we can do disclosures. Let's, Commissioner Olivas.
Commissioner Olivas, I visited the site, received emails, and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Johnson?
Commissioner Johnson, same disclosures.
Commissioner Munoz?
Commissioner Munoz, same disclosures.
Commissioner Gower?
Commissioner Gower, same disclosures.
Commissioner Taylor, same disclosures. So commissioners, do we want to have any discussion or questions for the applicant on the request for a continuance?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I, in light of the documentation that was provided to us earlier today and the request from the applicant and support of staff, I'm in favor of moving to continue the item to a uncertain date. And I'm willing to make that motion if there's no other discussion.
And Commissioner Munoz, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I like it. Discussion into a motion.
Was that formal enough for the attorney?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Michelle, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Kathleen Taylor.
Yes.
Peter Gower.
Yes.
Mark Johnson.
Yes.
Arthur Munoz.
Yes.
Paul Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item 5.5, can I just say everything that was done in 5.4, and we think, probably not the way it works. This is for possible action, case number LDC 21-00010 Daybreak PUD, planning area number 26. Andy, would you like to give a presentation?
No, I would defer unless the commission doesn't grant a continuance.
Thank you. Brooke?
I would defer unless the commission wishes to have a presentation.
Great, thank you. Michelle, this is a public hearing. Do we have any public comment?
All public comment received was forwarded to the Planning Commission. No voicemail was received on this item.
Great, thank you very much. We will close public comment, and we will do disclosures. Commissioner Olivas.
Commissioner Olivas, I visited the site, received emails, and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Johnson?
Commissioner Johnson, same disclosures.
Commissioner Gower?
Commissioner Gower, same.
Commissioner Munoz?
Same disclosures.
Commissioner Taylor, same disclosures. Commissioners, discussion, questions?
Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion to continue the item at the applicant's request.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Munoz, I second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Thank you. Michelle, can you please take a roll call vote?
Kathleen Taylor.
Yes.
Peter Gower.
Yes.
Mark Johnson.
Yes.
Arthur Munoz.
Yes.
Paul Olivas.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Andy. Thank you for your time tonight. Thank you, Brooke.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, moving on to item number six, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Commissioner Johnson or Commissioner Gower?
Good morning, Madam Chair. I'll do a quick update. We had a meeting two weeks ago. On that meeting, we saw the RPC, excuse me, the Conformance Review Item for the Cordova Master Plan Amendment. If you remember, that was the private parcel that was out there, sort of in Bird Eye, along the, near that storage area, I forget the name of that street, Crystal Park. And that was found in conformance. Also wanted to just point out that the commission looked at the Truckee Meadows Annual Report, and that process in the past was essentially each jurisdiction and affected entity would submit its annual report to regional planning, and they would kind of package it up, and that would be it. But just wanted to say that they put together a really neat website. Unfortunately, we don't have the website handy, but I think you can Google it, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Annual Report. And it has a lot of great information about housing units built, and just a lot of neat metrics over the past year, and they kind of track that data now. And it's really accessible, real-time data. So just wanted to pass that along to the commission and give kudos to regional planning for putting that together. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Gower. It is a great website. They did a great job. Angela, item seven, staff announcements.
Yeah, I have one exciting announcement that I know this commission will be happy to hear. We have been given direction that the NAB meetings will be resuming again. They will be a Zoom format, so we're still not doing in-person meetings. And it's going to be a little different. The council member who represents that NAB has the option to either do a monthly NAB meeting or a town hall meeting. Some of our council members prefer the town hall. It's a little bit more back and forth communicating with the neighbors. Other council members prefer the NAB format, so it's going to be at the option of that council member. But either way, it provides an opportunity for you guys to get feedback before projects come before Planning Commission. So very excited to be able to talk about that. At this point, we still are not doing any live in-person public hearings. Most of you probably heard the governor's directive this last week was that they are opening, changing the rules. Instead of having a maximum of 50 people, now locations can have a maximum of 250 people. However, City of Reno has opted to keep all of their park events limited to 50 people. We are not going to go to the 250 people mark, so all of our events that are held on private or, you know, public park property will still be limited to 50. And again, all of our public meetings, Planning Commission and City Council will continue to be in this Zoom format where we will not have live in-person meetings. So happy to share that news. I know that, like I said, you'll be happy to hear that the NABs are coming back. So we probably have an update on So we probably have an update on that. I'm thinking they're probably going to start in November timeframe. So that will impact projects that come before you guys in December. And that's all I had.
Great, thank you, Angela. That is exciting. Agenda item number eight, Commissioners' Suggestions for Future Agenda Items. Okay, number nine, public comment. Michelle, do we have any public comment?
We did not receive public comment for this item.
Great, thank you very much. We will close public comment. Item number 10, adjournment.
Commissioner Munoz, real quick, sorry, I was looking for a spot to jump in there. I just want to publicly say and urge the city that I think they need to resume public meetings in person. And I'd like to see that happen the next couple of months. I think it's important for the city and the projects that are impacted. That's all I had. Thank you.
Commissioner Munoz? And I'd just like to say, Commissioner Gower and Commissioner Munoz, you guys cannot wear blue shirts together with an applicant that's wearing blue shirts because I can't find you guys. Okay, so adjournment. I think we had it. Okay, good night, you guys. Thank you so much for all your help and all your work tonight.